The opinions expressed in this program are not those of CISA VII or Time Warner Cable.
I'd like to call the work session to order. All seven board members are present. To my left, I'm joined, or we're joined by Dr. Michelle Langenfeld, our superintendent. To my far-left is Sandy Heller, our board secretary. We also have two intercity student council members, Maddie Rogers from East and Grace Sinclair from Preble. First, we have time for open forum. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak before the board today? Seeing none, we will move on to our work session agenda. Before I get to that, I'd like to state for the public and also for our people on television that you can view the board agenda and the handouts, as well as minutes from past meetings, by visiting the district website at www.gbaps.org. Click on "Our District" and then "Board of Education." On the left menu, under the Board of Education, you will find a link to agendas and minutes. This link will take you to a website called Neptune, where all board agendas, minutes, and handouts from board meetings are housed. First, we have our teaching and learning work session. That will be facilitated by Ed Dorff.
Thank you. We have five items, and the first item, very, very interesting, some time ago, I shouldn't say some time ago, but earlier this year, obviously, we had established an engagement and climate work group. And Vicky Byer has been our, the board contact with that and has been a phenomenal job in terms of keeping us updated on a number of things. We've asked for a reminder, an update, on Act 125, seclusion and restraint. I'm going to turn it over to Vicky in just a second, but I'm going to ask you, just go off-script just a little bit here, before you introduce the folks for Act 125. And this would be basically for the benefit of folks who are watching this, watching the video. Would you talk just a little bit about that work group and what we've been doing with that work group, please?
Yes, sir. We have three members of the Board of Education that serve on the Engagement in Climate work group: Laura McCoy, Katie Maloney, and Mr. Dorff. We meet once a month to review behavior data, talk about our progress with the multi-level systems of support, and we spend the last 30 minutes focusing on an area of interest. For example, they've heard from this group that you'll hear from tonight on Act 125. I believe we have Equity coming up, a presentation from Equity, and this month, we heard from Alternative Ed with some proposals about expanding our programming in the future.
And I think it's been very, very helpful. So, would you?
Can I ask a question? In terms of timing of, well, I'm interested in the two topics that you mentioned, other than the one we're hearing about, "Oh, I'm interested in today's too," but it's already here.
Yes, ma'am.
But are you planning to bring all of those topics that are presented at the work group to us?
Yes, we've actually discussed that. Yes.
Or will there be times where the work group might say, you know, maybe that'll be more pertinent in a couple months? Or, I mean, that's sort of the work group's determination of what to bring and when?
I think we have, actually. You know, we have, the three board members have brought those things up as far as, you know, this is something we, for tonight's example, you know, we would really like to have a presentation on an update with restraint and seclusion. We have had information before, you know, Claudia and her staff have presented that before, but we thought the timing was good for a reminder for an update on that, so.
Good.
Any other questions before I turn it back over to Vicky, then?
Good, thank you. Please. As Mr. Dorff has mentioned, in 2011, the state legislature in Wisconsin passed Act 125, which is about seclusion and restraints. He already mentioned the Engagement in Climate Committee. I don't want to mix those two up. Recommended, we come to the full board to do a presentation and answer any questions that you might have about what we've been doing to ensure that our staff are aware of what the law is. Prior to them starting, though, and I'll introduce the three in a moment, in your board packet, you have received an updated document with the seclusion and restraint numbers. We finally had enough time to really look into the electronic submissions, which was a new method of submitting last year, and we did find some errors. So, the copy you have today is the updated. Tonight, we're joined.
Wait, sorry, the copy that's in Neptune?
Yeah, it should be in Neptune.
Okay, and that's updated from the one we had last Friday? Oh, August. Oh, got it. Okay.
Yeah, back in August.
All right, thanks.
Tonight, we're joined by Executive Director of Student Services, Claudia Henrickson, Associate Director Dara Atandari, sorry, and Associate Director Julie Harris. So, I will turn it over to them.
You're welcome. We're going to start off, what we thought would be the best idea would be to show you the presentation from the Department of Public Instruction, seeing as how this was the official one that was rolled out to the state of Wisconsin and the one that we presented to the principals. So, Act 125 is a revision done to the rules surrounding seclusion and restraint. The objectives of the entire presentation are outlined above, but we're going to cover the definitions of physical restraint, seclusion, the notification and reporting aspects, the training, and then the special education additional requirements that are also on there. So, the applications of Act 125, the number-one misunderstanding is that people believe that Act 125, seclusion and restraint, only applies to students with disabilities. It does not. It applies to all students. We have the same reporting rights for both students with special ed or reporting responsibilities for students with special ed, as well as students without special ed. And it applies to only public schools. It does not apply to the private schools. But when you say "public schools," that would include all charters. And it applies to any staff or independent contractors that we employ with us that work with students. So, if we have any of those outside agencies, they have the same reporting requirements. But that does not apply to law enforcement officers. So, if an officer were to come into our building and seclude or restrain, that's not something that we would report on because that's an official police response. So, what are the definitions that the Department of Public Construction and the federal government came up with for physical restraint? And it's a restriction that immobilizes or reduces the ability of a student to freely move his or her torso, arms, legs, or head. So, that's a pretty broad term, and Julie will get into that in a little bit. But seclusion, then, is involuntary confinement of a student, apart from other students, in a room or area where the student is physically prevented from leaving. Key point, physically restricted or prevented from leaving. So, people often think when you ask a student to go to the office that that's a seclusion. That's not a seclusion if they're able to leave. So, what is it prohibit? The law prohibits the use of physical restraint or seclusion in schools generally unless there's clear, present, and imminent danger to either themselves or others. And clear, present, and imminent danger is up to the individual who's in the instance. You don't need to wait till they actually harm themselves or other. If it's going to be imminent, they're young, and they don't understand the rules, those types of things. And also, you have to be making sure that you're doing this in the least, you have the least restrictive intervention. So, you don't go from a minor infraction to a seclusion or a restraint. Again, imminent danger is your key.
Okay, so, physical restraints can be very challenging, as we can imagine. And back in the year 2011, '12 is really when the Department of Public Construction started to investigate this further and put this on new law to place. And the reality is, is that there were many kids that were being harmed, many kids that were harmed, and unfortunately, it was passing. There were students that actually died from the restraint, but there have been throughout the country because there was inappropriate restraint that was implemented with students. And so, the rules became very clear at that point that we needed to take very good caution when we were working with students. So, in looking at physical restraint, it can only even be used when there's no medical contraindications to its use. So, if a student has medical issues and we're aware of that, that could be problematic, then we cannot use physical restraint. In addition, the force and the duration, it has to be considered that we can't exceed what would be necessary for the force or the duration for the safety of the student. So, that's what caused most harm for many kids. If you read some of the laws or some of the incidents that had occurred throughout the country in this area, that many kids were being restrained for hours. And when a child is put into situations like that where restraints, whether it might be in a prone position or those types of things, for a very long period of time, or they're putting compression on their bodies or their chests or their neck or what have you, it can cause great harm to the individual or worse. So, we want to make sure that none of those are factors in that process. So, the maneuvers or techniques that are prohibited, we have to make sure that we're looking at providing safety to the people's head. So, when staff are trained, they're going to be trained in different ways to be able to make sure that the student's head is protected if they are implementing some form of physical restraints. Also, I kind of mentioned a little bit, the chest compression. We have to look at anything within the major organs that we're not putting any pressure on those organs. You know, there have been situations where students have been placed in, under weighted blankets for periods of time. And, I mean, to the point where their heads were even covered up, and they've had serious injury, lack of oxygen. And I read a story a few years ago, of a student who had died because of that. And so, I mean, it's just really important for us to make sure that we're not, or we're not doing things that could interfere with circulation or breathing or those types of things. And I know this sounds harsh, but that's a reality that was occurring years ago. But in the state of Wisconsin, they put these rules into place so this wouldn't happen here.
None of these extreme stories, none of those were here?
No.
None?
No, none were in the state of Wisconsin, none were in Green Bay. Essentially, they were put, these provisions were put into place to prevent this from ever occurring in the state of Wisconsin. Okay? They also talk about medical and chemical restraints, and you might look, or mechanical, I'm sorry, or chemical restraints. And when you look at mechanical restraints, those may be things such as belting a student in and that type of thing. So, there is something called a Riften chair that some individuals who have disabilities like CP, they might need to be in a chair, cerebral palsy, sorry, to be, they might be in a chair that actually puts restraints in their feet and the body of their torso and keep them in place so they don't fall off of their chair. That would be an appropriate use of restraint for a child who needs it. But to control a child's behavior, you can't put a child in that chair to keep them still.
What was that called? What was that chair called?
It's called a Riften.
Riften?
R-I-F-T-O-N.
Oh, T-O-N, okay.
You'll see it in classes of students with significant physical disabilities.
You might have seen them on individual students' wheelchairs.
Correct.
I just hadn't seen the name, if I know exactly what you're talking about.
Riften is a brand.
Yes. And during this time when this law was being put into place, there were some kids put in those chairs in early childhood classes in particular, and they were belted in, and when they didn't have those postural needs, it was more of a behavioral thing. We're going to strap them in.
What would a chemical restraint be?
Like a medical medication type of thing. If you insisted that a child take their medicine or we had medicine, that they, we can't do that.
Okay.
Yeah, so that would be an example of that. So, essentially, those are the things that we need to practice out there, considering physical restraints. Okay, and then what is not physical restraint? So, essentially, you know, there are many times that you're working with students and touching their hand, arm, shoulder, back, something to calm them, comfort them, those types of things. Some people really believe that they can't touch a student. They can't put their hands on a student. That is not true. We can comfort kids. We can support them. We can do those types of things. It's not restraint. So, we just need to help people understand that that's normal human nature when you care about somebody to help them in that matter.
So, next, we'll talk about seclusion. And remember that, just like physical restraint, seclusion should only be used when a student presents a clear, present, and imminent risk to their safety or the safety of others, as well as their environment. So, under what conditions can we use seclusion? We can use it, as stated, when there's a safety risk for the student or the environment, or we feel that the student needs to have some time in order to, what we would call, de-escalate in a specific type of situation. But in doing so, we are using this as a crisis intervention. So, it's not a disciplinary measure. So, we can't put a student in a secluded area because they're being disruptive to the classroom or they're not following rules. That would be more of a disciplinary measure, and then we would follow those procedures. But we would not put them in a secluded area or in the seclusion room. But if the student is doing things that, again, are going to potentially harm them or harm others, then, under those circumstances, we may use a room or an area. But in doing so, there are certain procedures that we need to follow. It has to be a room where there is somebody who can have constant supervision over the student. So, there would be a person who can constantly watch what's going on. Therefore, if it's a room, the room would need to have a window. Another stipulation is that there cannot be any locks on the door. The student may not be locked in. They have to have the ability to be able to get out of the room. And also, we need to make sure that whatever adequate necessities a student has, whether they need to have access to the bathroom, they need to have a drink of water, or anything like that, that has to be available as well. So, as I stated before, it has to be a certain area. You have to have, for example, a room with a window. It has to be free of objects or fixtures that the student potentially could get a hold of, that they could harm themselves or harm somebody else. Again, no locks on the door. And that includes, like, holding down types of mechanisms. So, for example, you can have a kind of latch on the outside, but it's something that doesn't lock. And it's not anything on the other side where the student could get locked in, so they could come out willingly if they need to. Regarding seclusion, once the crisis is over, then seclusion should end. So, therefore, we should not be secluding students for an hour. Because usually, when they're in a crisis, crisis can last for a while. But at the first time that the crisis has de-escalated, we need to end the seclusion for the student. So, that's what seclusion is. What seclusion is not? If, for example, a student is disruptive and you're saying, "Can you step outside in the hallway for a few minutes to calm down?" You certainly can do that. That would be something that's more disciplinary in nature or something that, a technique that you're using just to de-escalate a situation. But it's not considered seclusion. For example, if the student needs to go to the principal's office because you may have established a relationship or rapport, if Vicky is having a hard time, she can come down and see me. That's not considered seclusion. And if you ask them, for example, to stay inside to complete a task because they had a hard time during class and they were unable to do it, you certainly can do that. That's not considered seclusion. Yes, ma'am?
I know a lot of our schools are creating places for kids to self-select themselves if they need time away from the classroom to calm down. Is that a different room from the seclusion room?
Yes, that's different. So, again, seclusion is a room that's specific to what we would call a crisis, a crisis intervention room, if you will, if you would think of it in that nature.
And every school has a room like that?
No, every school does not have a seclusion room.
They might have places within the classroom where kids can go down and de-escalate. Many of the students just, they make a corner in a classroom, things to that nature.
And so, that would be considered seclusion?
No, that's self-selected. That's what you were talking about, the self-selected ones.
Right, right, okay. But these seclusion areas, I mean, I assume each school has to have something that they, they don't, okay? Because they don't need it or they don't have space?
Because it's a last resort, and so, we're making sure that staff are utilizing them properly. The big thing now that we're hearing, and this is a little off-task, but off-topic, but we're hearing a lot about mindfulness and seclusion restraint rooms and then processing rooms. All of those things are different rooms. So, that, once you seclude a student in a room, that's not no longer a safe space for them to be at. So, that's where our training is going right now is wherever you seclude them, that's now got a negative connotation. And they have to have a different place if you want them to actually calm down. And now, with all of our trauma-informed training that we've had, people are beginning to understand that. But there is space issues in how do you develop three different rooms. So, people are being creative. Do you have more? Okay, so, the notification requirements. Once a student has been secluded or restrained, you have to, as soon as possible, but no later than one business day after the incident, you have to notify the parents that the student had a seclusion or a restraint and that there is a written report available to them if they want that report.
Claudia, can I do have a question on that? I realize this is a DPI PowerPoint, but when it says the availability of the report, that suggests, I mean, it says plainly that it's not an automatic, that the parent is going to be getting that report.
Right.
Is our practice, is that our practice, or do we automatically provide a written report to the parent?
Sure, good question, because I was going to get to that, too. But yes, we've taken it one step further. So, especially now that they're electronic, they can't lock the form unless they tell me the date that they sent it to the parents. Because our expectation is that all seclusion and restraints are not just notified, parents are not just notified, but they are provided the copy of what occurred. Because we want to work as partners with the families, and only together can we really get at the root of what the problem is that's causing the behavior.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dorff.
So, do they get an email, a phone call with an email? How does that work?
Sure, they get a phone call, and then the electronic version is downloaded and then sent home with the student. And the parents are notified that the form is being sent home. If it's not a student that we feel could get that home safely, we send it home via email, or via mail, US mail. Some schools might be savvy and be doing it by email, but mostly, I've gotten lots of requests for, because the schools want to keep them on file also, because that's another piece that we have to make sure that we keep them on file, a record of all of the seclusions and restraints for every building. And they want to, it's easier for them to just make that copy, file it, and make another copy for the family.
Is there another point of contact after that's gone out so that you know they've received it?
No. Good idea, though.
But they know it's coming. They know they're looking for it.
Yeah, we tell them to be looking for it, correct.
Is it fair to say that the youngsters we're talking about here is just not an isolated event? Do you probably?
We had conversations with the parents already about what would be done or should be done in case the youngster can't control themselves. And is this a safety concern?
Yes, most of our students would have some sort of safety plan. Some of these are, you know, you couldn't predict that they would have them, but there are rules surrounding that that, once a student has that happen, especially a student with a disability, there are some procedural safeguards that are afforded to them for re-looking at the IEPs. But most of our families, most of our schools ask the families to come in. If there's one or two incidences like that, we want to get at what is the cause of that behavior and figure out ways to diminish that behavior or make that behavior not occur again. Get their needs met, basically. So, within, so right here, it says, "We have to, we do it within two business days." We have to prepare a report, and all of the things that are up there, the student's name, the date, the duration, description, and the names of those present, all are included in our seclusion and restraint.
A point of clarification, if I may. The youngsters we're talking about, one or in, right now, are receiving special education services. And we're not talking about kids that are just on speech or LD. These are youngsters that, most part of, have been identified as having emotional problems. Is that a fair statement?
Did you say "most"?
That they have emotional problems, they've been identified.
Are you asking, are all the seclusion restraint students with disabilities?
Once we're talking about, right now, are basically youngsters receiving special education services. We're not talking about youngsters in regular education going into seclusion rooms. If there are, I guess we should know about that. Two, the youngsters you're talking about now are ones that have been identified as having behavior problems, for the most part. They're not youngsters that haven't been identified already. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, it is.
I do notice on the, on the report, when we look at the number of students involved in the incidents, it's not broken down, restraint versus seclusion. It's all together, I believe. But it shows 151 total students involved, 108 are students with disabilities. So, two-thirds of the students involved here are students with disabilities.
Correct. And then, when you go to the bottom, it splits it out by race and ethnicity. Seclusion is one column, restraint is another. Yes?
Those numbers above, that's both seclusion and restraint.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. Did I answer your question, Dr. Reigner?
Well, I, when we get to the numbers later, I guess I do have a question. That one just brings it up. Are there youngsters in regular ed that have been put in seclusion? And perhaps you can't answer that right now, and you can later.
Correct. I can tell you that there's been students that are in regular ed who've either been secluded or restrained, but at this particular time, I can't tell you which. I can get that for you. If that's what you like.
And I guess that begs the question, if that's ongoing with those particular students, why aren't they receiving special education services? And maybe they're headed that way, but...
So, at the time of the seclusion or the restraint, they may not have had an identified special education need, but it would probably be fair to say, if it's happened more than once, that they've been referred for special ed? Okay? Reporting, the report must be kept available to the students, and I think I said that already. Each year, and that's what you got, by September 1, I must, I'm the designee. So, I submit to the school board a report of the number of incidences of seclusion and restraint, the total number of students involved in that, and the total number of students with disabilities. Our district goes one step further, does it by race and ethnicity also. That's not something that we're required to do, but we're trying to be transparent and look at equity and disproportionality and make sure we're cognizant of that. That generally goes for some of you who have not experienced it. We put that in the green letter. And I think it was in July's green letter, August's green letter, that goes to the board members this year. Training requirements. So, no school staff member can do seclusion or restraint unless they've received training. Our district does non-violent crisis intervention training, which, a majority of that training, that two days for the full training, is spent on de-escalation techniques. So, they spend a half a day on the actual seclusion and restraints and how to do them properly and safely. But the majority of it is, how do you de-escalate a situation? Because seclusion and restraint, again, should be the last resort. So, each school where there's physical restraint may be, where physical restraint may be used, has to have at least one staff member who's been trained. We've multiplied that. We have almost every single special education teacher, every single special education para, counselors, social workers, administrators, multiple people in our district have been trained, and we keep that, and we're required to keep that training on record. That's held in the People's Services Department, and we ensure that we keep their certifications valid. So, the training includes the methods of preventing the need, and again, I kind of outlined everything that the training requires. But it's, again, more about the de-escalation. How do you build the relationships and how do you deter any seclusion or restraints? Because what we want is kids in school learning as much as possible. If there's an unforeseen emergency, the one or the two or the three people or whomever are not available, and the student is going to cause imminent danger to themselves or already is causing danger to themselves or others, there is a provision in the law that affords a person who has not been trained to be able to do this restraint as a last resort. And that's outlined there, too. So, when it comes to IEPs, Dara will speak to the specialty requirements for that.
So, as we've talked about earlier, this applies to both students who are regular ed and students who have an individual education program. However, we do have certain... However, um, we do have certain processes and certain stipulations that we have in place for students who have IEPs. So if a team can determine ahead of time, um, that a student might have a need for seclusion and/or restraint, then they are required to document that some type of way within the IEP. Typically, we might have a crisis intervention plan for the student and that could be something that would be indicated as a technique that we would use for the student. But when we are being proactive about this, we like to be able to determine what is it that would cause the student to go into crisis. So in order to do that, we make sure that we conduct an FBA, which is a functional behavioral assessment. And then once we conduct the FBA, we develop a behavior intervention plan. So all of those things go in concert together, um, in the context of the student's IEP. And again, um, because this is a document that has, um, legal connotations connected to it, we need to be very clear about statements. We have to be very clear about what we will use, when we will use it, and, um, all of the other, for example, support staff or the other teachers that are involved, how they will be included in what we are doing when we are using restraint and/or seclusion with students who have IEPs. So that's when we're being proactive, which is the majority of the time. However, sometimes we don't have time to have it all laid out in an IEP and it might become necessary that you use seclusion and restraint with a student. So in that case, um, staff who are properly trained are allowed to do that, but then immediately following afterwards. As soon as possible. We like to conduct an IEP review revise. And at that point, we will consider use of seclusion and restraint within the student's IEP if we, if the IEP team deems it necessary.
Let me ask, at this point, how do we make sure that that's happening? I mean, I, I think back, you know, we used to have this, and still do, have that same requirement for a child with an IEP, should he or she get a suspension, that there'd be a requirement to have an IEP review as soon as possible. How do we make sure that that's happening? I mean, how is that communicated?
So, we, we like to do, we, uh, we try to do a good job about streamlining things. So how we communicate it is that, you know, we have, uh, special education supervisors who are in the schools. And this year, they're really working, um, more in concert with their school building administrators. So they're, they're leading like the, uh, monthly department meetings. And so at that time, they share all information that would be pertinent to students who have IEPs. So when we talk about how do we address students who have particular behavioral challenges and needs, this is what they are communicating via staff meetings. And then they also have different processes that they like to utilize. So for example, if we have a student who is going to be coming up on six or seven days of suspension, then they are all communicating together. Then at that time, if we foresee they will go over, uh, and I'm not trying to get off the topic, but if they're gonna go over the ten-day rule, then, once we see you're at about six or seven days, that's when we start talking about plans of provision and different things that would apply. So in that case, if we have a student who, uh, we've noticed maybe every week or every other week for the last, um, two months, you've been having a lot of issues, you're having a lot of concerns, where they have to be restrained and these types of things, then they will get together with the team, conduct the IEP review revise, and really use all of the tools that we have to make sure, um, we give students who have disabilities what they need to be successful. And this includes use of manifestation determinations that we are now starting to do at the local level. So we're not waiting until it becomes a disciplinary issue where we have to have the, uh, associate director of pupil services to conduct the meeting along with myself or Julie if they have a disability, but we are asking them to start that at the school level. And that's also when they consider things at that level, too. And it's all based off how often you are removed. So when you get to that six, seven day mark, we start to see patterns. And we're teaching schools and administrators and staff how to identify patterns of behavior so we can be more proactive early on.
And manifestation determinations and, um, plans of provision can be something that we will explain to you further, because that would take an entire professional development on that, too. I'd like you to also note that we've made them electronic, the forms are electronic now, so that I get, um, every time a seclusion or restraint occurs, I get that, it comes across my computer. I'm able to go in and look at, you know, we ask specifically, what happened immediately before the behavior occurred? What happened while you were restraining? What happened after you were done restraining? And I've been able to do a lot of training with staff and questioning them about that so that I can get clearer patterns, so that we can help them to see the patterns that are going on and what's happening. Also within there, you have to talk about if, was it in or not? One of the questions is, if it's a student with a disability, was it written in their IEP seclusion restraint? And they have to answer yes or no. If it's not in there, they have to tell me when the meeting is going to occur. It's been lots of professional development around that and working, we've decided to have, this happened, I believe, last year or the year before, we started to have special education building administrators. So we call them SEVAs affectionately. We train them monthly. Those are the administrators in the building that are responsible for students with disabilities. We train them at a higher level than we train all the other principal, the regu- just the other administrators. That group in, has deans in it also. And, um, done a lot of professional development around them so that they're doing it at the local level. We have lead teachers at the secondary levels that are following up on that paperwork to make sure that if seclusion restraints are occurring, um, that they're relooking at the IEPs. I just recently sent an email to a school, um, saying, I know you have a, a number of new staff. I noticed they didn't do the prof- the annual training on seclusion and restraint, because there's one in, um, safe schools. May, I suggested that they give that to the staff and then give a refresher to the other staff because of the nature of, um, the type of students. So we're trying to be a little more proactive. Vicky and I were in conversations about, um, sending, letting, sending out to the schools, like a report. And I know that, um, technology has been working on getting that developed for us, a, a report of where are the seclusions and restraints happening and where we're seeing high flyers, um, of schools, that we're able to grab that data, dig down deeper, and figure out what we can do to help support the staff.
Sure, go ahead.
Just as a follow-up, Dar, you were talking about convening an IEP team and then doing a manifestation and possibly, um, changing some of the students' programming. How is that communicated out? Elementary, you might have one teacher. How do you communicate that in secondary schools to all the teachers who are going to be supporting that student as well?
So again, we have the, um, elementary-wise, we lean heavily on our supervi- supervisors to be that, uh, kinda liaison with the school building administrator and then all of the special education teams within their schools. And then at the high school level, we have our lead teachers. So our lead teachers, uh, along with the department chairs for special ed, we lean heavily on them to communicate that. And we are, um, trying to do a better job of helping all of our staff members use all of the tools that are available within special education as a whole and not just, uh, so for example, like using manifestations is a really good, um, it's a, a good tool for data. It's a very good tool for data collection and it helps everybody who works with the student to begin to see, uh, more quickly when students are beginning to escalate, what are the triggers? Because one thing we say is what happens immediately before the student went off into whatever they went off into and they'll say, nothing happened, it just came from nowhere. And so we're doing a better job of communicating to them like, no, something happened. So, for example, did they walk in class and they came in class and, um, they did not have the supplies? And they're the kind of person who has problems with authority. So if you say, uh, could you please, they are gonna say absolutely not and furthermore. So those types of things. So just being more, um, cognizant of the state of the student and we're giving them more tools. And, um, our program, our district-wide program, support teachers specifically for behavior and for autism have been very helpful with that because they know all the tools and the techniques and all the tricks. And they help us to train the staff as well. And again, we are all working collaboratively with our special ed supervisors, with our lead teachers. So really using those district resources to get, um, the message out to everybody so we can all come to more of a common understanding. And I think that we are much further along now than we have been in a while.
We've, we've provided professional development, it's, albeit it's voluntary, but it's for pay after school. One group has got a behavior focus, so we, we focus very much so on functional behavioral assessments, behavior intervention plans, appropriate use and not appropriate use of seclusion and restraint. We separated the students with, um, or the teachers who teach predominantly students with autism, on the autism spectrum, have even created some rooms that, um, we're excited to talk to about some of the programs that we built around autism, um, at the next meeting or the meeting after that, to provide supports for students with autism, teachers of students with autism, because we recognized that there was a lot of, um, restraints that were happening to students on the spectrum. How could we reduce that? And it's all about knowledge. So we've done a lot of professional development around that after school and with our lead teachers, our department chairs. Questions?
We are, questions, uh? Chris, go ahead, please.
Couple, if I may. Would you kind of give us examples of behaviors that rise to the level of restraint and behaviors that rise to the level of seclusion that we actually deal with in our district?
Can I give examples of that? Is that true? A student, a student with, uh, a kindergartner or a pre-K student running out of the building and into the street, we might need to restrain them to get them out of the street for their safety. But in a, a high schooler with an emotional behavioral disability who's, um, runs out in the street and can navigate traffic, we wouldn't think generally that you would be doing, uh, restraint on that. A student that is causing, causing physical harm to himself or herself or others, students that might be, um, if, if you were to throw, like your fist through, like you were going to throw your fist through a window or throw an object through a window, we would restrain them.
Yeah, and I think it's really looking at the severity of the behavior that's occurring. They talk about physical restraints, um, and then moving that child maybe into seclusion to, to calm. It, it has to be severe. It's not just the time where a student is starting to escalate and that type of thing. It's when a student is out of control and they can't control themselves, they can't control their bodies, they're looking to hit somebody or hurt themselves. That's essentially the time that you would look at a restraint. And then obviously, at that point, you wanna make sure the child is safe and then maybe move them into seclusion if you can. Sometimes you're gonna take the rest of the students and move them out of the room and you're gonna work with that student in the room if that's available. If the student's in the hallway demonstrating that behavior, you're gonna try to get that student into a safe place. But really, look, in every, every case is unique, but it's really that imminent risk or harm to themselves or others.
Do you have another question?
Two, if I may. We notify parents when a youngster is put into restraint. If that same youngster had hurt another student, do we notify the parents of the student that was injured?
Yes.
That's, that's how I make, can you keep records of that of some sort?
Yes.
Then the second question, um, do we keep records? And I'm making assumption that now and then teachers do get hit or injured. Are we keeping records of that and how that occurs or what occurs in those situations?
Teachers that have been hit or?
Staff members that have been injured by students.
Sure, yes, and I would think that, um, human resources could speak to that more, so.
Staff member fills out an accident report that comes into human resources. And we follow up with them through a nurse with PRAE, to see if they needed any follow-up care or needed to talk to someone.
With, with that, and, you know, I'm not assuming that you have the answer to this, but, um, i- if I'm a teacher and a youngster shoves me, uh, and if I fall down and hurt myself, I could see myself filling out an accident report. But if the youngster just shoves me, which is inappropriate, do we keep track of that? Because that is basically an assault.
We, and I, if I'm incorrect, you, correct me, but we ask, um, employees to fill out accident reports for being shoved, for being scratched, for being pinched. We ask them to fill out accident reports for all of those things. And we have that, um, spreadsheet and our safety and security committee is working on, um, looking at ways to make sure that we can reduce that even further. So we are keeping track of that.
That's correct.
Thank you.
So I, I was approached this, just this fall, by a teacher who described a situation where restraint was probably indicated. But she made the comment that, I can't restrain and this makes my job very difficult because here's the situation, I've got one kid that's hurting other kids and it's out of control. I can't, I can't restrain that child. So I'm wondering what's going on that we have, uh, disconnect in terms of, of our teachers? And, and is that something that we're continuing to educate them with or, or? I mean, I guess I'm just concerned that that's still, that not everybody knows that they can restrain students.
So there, when Act 125 came out, I think that frightened a lot of people. And that is something, so the pendulum went really the opposite, opposite way and everybody erred on the side of caution. At the end of last year, I know that's a, it's a prevailing, um, notion out there in our district. And the last year, we had all of our special education staff there. And I, I made sure I told them that if it's, uh, clear and imminent danger, that they should be able to restrain. And if a student is kicking you and hitting you, you shouldn't stand there and let a student hit and kick you and push you and throw a desk into you, you should be restraining them because that's imminent danger. Throwing a computer on the ground, people thought they couldn't restrain because there was a, a point where one of the trainings is, if they're ripping, um, papers off the wall, you can't restrain them for that. But you have to use common sense and I think people are frightened that something's going to happen to them. And then we've been assuring them, Vicky and myself, for a number of years, that they're not going to, if they're using what they, what they're supposed to be doing, they have to think about what they would do within that minute. Nobody, nobody's gonna hold that against you as long as you've done it in the proper way and everything is intact.
So I guess, in this particular situation, then, the question in my mind just became a little bit different. This is a cla- a classroom gym teacher. And so I, it, I just recall from the beginning of your presentation that not everybody in the building is trained.
That's correct.
So how do we continue to work toward being able to have this gym teacher have the capacity to, to somehow restrain a student when they're not trained? And, and what happens in other classrooms with classroom teachers that also have not been trained in restraint? Just talk about that challenge.
And I wanna, I wanna just kinda piggyback on that a little bit as well, because that was a question I had. Seeing in, in, in particular the fact that a third of the restraints and seclusions that were reported were for general ed kids and, and, you know, you said it very well that these may be precursors to a referral for special education, but nonetheless, these are kids who are not identified with IEPs. What, what are the assurances out there or what are we working towards to make sure that the teachers like Brenner is talking about, the regular ed teacher, the regular classroom, have that training and clear understanding? And are we doing anything to, to assess their understanding of it? Because, you know, we, we do hear that, those misunderstandings.
And if I can just follow up on that, and that is actually exactly what we wrote in our committee to ask them to bring this to the board, so that it can be discussed at a board meeting and board members be fully versed on.
Thank you.
The process. So that's exactly why we wanted to do this in the first place.
So we appreciate the questions. It's, it's not cheap to train staff on NBCI.
I, nonviolent crisis intervention. So we target specific areas, certainly the special education teachers, primarily those that work with the EBD students, autism students, those that we would suspect would be at a higher risk of needing restraint or seclusion, than our building administrators and the paraprofessionals that work in, in those classrooms. Beyond that, if, the board is interested in expanding the trainings, or let's, let's back up. The person you're talking about, I would hope they would feel comfortable enough talking to their building administrator. If it's a one-time incident, I don't know that we would want to or need to put that person through any type of training. But we would certainly be open to providing some training to regular education staff if the need were there. We would just need to consider the cost that would come along with it.
And every building has or should be, have a security team, a safety team. So, and we have equipped most of the buildings with multiple, multiple, multiple walkie-talkies. And they are able to walkie-talkie. And they are able to walkie-talkie somebody to the office to get the help and the support that they need from a trained person. That's what they do in districts across the country is they, most districts don't have the number of people trained in NVCI that we do, so they have safety teams that come to the classrooms. And that's, a lot of our social workers and counselors and psychologists are being called on, because they are the ones that have been trained and they come down to the office once they get the walkie-talkie call.
Is this an issue with sufficient impact that we might look at providing training to safe schools much as we do for bloodborne pathogens, child abuse neglect training? It would not be the full 12 hours NVCI, which I don't think everybody needs either, but at least something to disabuse people of the misunderstandings they have.
Yes, and actually, we've gone to modification of the training to just focus primarily on the de-escalation for regular education staff. So they know they can restrain if they need to in circumstances that are
Some daughter bear may.
Yeah, right, right. That's true.
Just for example, if you're, if you're the teacher in the classroom and you have a circumstance or situation like Claudia was discussing, I may not have time to pick up a phone, radio, and I may not be trained. They should have and will not be held harm, you know, they'll be held harmless if they decide to address it because they are in imminent danger. My students might be in imminent danger. I think we just have to be, that's the messiness you're talking about. Because if I'm the only one there and it's going, I have to do something.
Right.
You have a duty to care. You have to react, yeah.
Is it possible, and again, I don't know all the ins and outs of what the setup is, but in some cases, I think there's, there are students that have had problems in, you know, their own classroom, like at an elementary school, and there's a para in there and, you know, people in there that can restrain. But then in this case of this gym teacher, the music teacher, the art teacher, the paras don't necessarily follow the child to that room. So I just wonder if it's, you know, sitting down and looking at where are the points at which we can predict that this child might do something in those, whatever they're called, specials, in those specials areas and look at giving some sort of specific training, whether it's the safe schools or a Safety and Security Team that meets or the whole, you know, two-day training.
And as far as students with disabilities, we have increased the number of para professionals in the district at a large rate, the one-to-ones in particular. Our students with disabilities who have those challenges should be going to the specials with the paraprofessionals.
Except, sorry, can I, except we have a third of our seclusion and restraint incidents with kids that don't have paras, that don't have IEPs.
Exactly.
And so it just seems like there needs to be some, maybe not as intense as what we've done, but some other layer to prepare all of our teachers in some way in terms of how do they respond, especially if it's the first time. Again, you should be, you know, you're given an emergency permission, but I think to make sure our teachers understand what that means, what that emergency permission is, but then if they've done it once, then it has to immediately pop out to the team or the administrators or somebody to look at, you know, what are we going to do the next time if that happens or how are we going to prevent it from happening, those kinds of things.
Andrew, go ahead, please.
So I have a few questions that are probably going to sound like they're coming from just completely opposite ends of the spectrum on this. First, I guess the first thing I would, I would like to ask about is what are the, and perhaps I'm thinking of something that was an isolated incident, but how common is it for a teacher to go on paid administrative leave following a restraint incident? Is that only if there's some suspicion of wrongdoing or is it, is it half of restraint incidents? Is it barely any restraint incidents?
Oftentimes, if a teacher or a staff member is put on a paid administrative leave, it's because there's been a complaint alleged by the family and to the principal. And then in order to investigate whether or not it was appropriately done, we may put them on paid administrative leave. It isn't done often. Oftentimes, when a person is put on paid administrative leave, it's for some other kind of touching or handling of the student that's more serious than a restraint done in good faith.
Okay, so like zero, one, or two in a year, or is it a dozen? I mean, there's seven hundred, there's 493 restraint events here, so.
I actually tracked them.
Okay. I guess, you know, one thing that concerns me is, you know, we're saying here in a board meeting to whoever's listening that you have the right to use restraint in an emergency, even if you didn't have the training. But then people talk and people know situations and I certainly know one where there was an extraordinary amount of paid administrative leave time for someone who was found to have not broken any restraint rules. So I guess if I'm hearing the board saying this, but then I remember, you know, I remember a case where someone restrained a student and was gone for a long time, even though they didn't, you know, maybe, maybe I'm hesitant to do that and maybe that's a chilling effect that lasts for a long, a long time.
When did this occur?
I don't want to pinpoint a person, but.
As far as, as long as I've been here as a director of special ed, I've never had any.
It may have been just before your time here.
Okay, because I was going to say, I don't personally recall any teacher being put on administrative leave for a seclusion done or a restraint done. That wasn't, yes, for restraint, I'll just say that honestly. I haven't. And I've tried to say that.
So it's been, it's been years, it's been years since?
I can't speak.
I can't, I would, with Claudia, I would say that if there's a question that comes up through the family member to the principal and the principal almost always will talk with the person. And if it's found that there may have been something inappropriate, there may be, there may be a leave. I can't remember anything right now, but I, since I've been here, I have tracked these if they occur.
Okay, so, yes, my next question goes to the, what is the, what is the right of a teacher to self-defense? I'm thinking of a case where whatever was negotiated into the IEP was to avoid restraint and someone is coming at the teacher, do they have a right to, do they have a right to self-defense anyways? And do they have, you know, you have all these rules that you can't put pressure on a student's head or something, which I certainly don't want to see that happening in our schools, but what if, I mean, what if the teacher has to do something that would be considered perhaps striking or, you know, to get something, to get attacking student away? Do they have that right or do they just have to cover up and take it till the police come or whatever? That's a harsh, that's a harsh question, but the situation is going to happen someday.
The techniques that are educated in the pool can be followed to the best of the staff's ability. And so, you know, protecting, protecting the body of the individual who's being restrained or important, well, understand some things can happen really fast, right? Maybe administrators, somebody, a staff member is breaking up a fight, that has happened in this district, breaking up a fight, somebody might get hurt in that situation or an arm might be pulled a certain way or maybe you need to do something that's, you know, might look excessive, but the goal is to not go up to someone, grab them on the back and be able to, you know, get them in a headlock. That would not be safe. That would not be nonviolent crisis intervention in that situation.
Well, if they're holding a weapon. And I'm saying, I mean, can, can they, do they have the right?
I think, I think the important thing to remember is that every situation is going to be unique and there's, there's no way that rules can possibly anticipate every situation that may occur, especially as Julie said, these things happen fast and things are just going to evolve in these situations. And for those of you that are sitting on the board that have been administrators, know exactly how, how unique and sometimes difficult these situations can be. I would say that if somebody was in a situation where they were using their nonviolent crisis intervention trained techniques, or they were in those situations that Claudia talked about that are exceptions to being trained by nonviolent crisis intervention and needing to use a restraint, that using a reasonable prudent parent's prudent standard is what we would use to determine if the staff member was acting appropriately. And if there's a gun and they have to, you know, and the gun is somewhere near ahead and have to employ some sort of technique that would not be typically allowed in a restraint, that would probably be acceptable, Andrew. But I think we've been in these conversations before where we talk about we cannot possibly, you know, script out everything that's going to happen in these situations. And I, our staff is, as Claudia and Jean have said, and I've been here almost five and a half years, I have not been involved in a situation where a staff member has been disciplined for implementing something that was not consistent with nonviolent crisis intervention. In addition to that, though, we have had staff members who have not followed their NVCI training and who have been hurt and who have, themselves have been hurt because they were not using the proper techniques. And we have a high level of staff injuries because staff are not following their NVCI training and they themselves get hurt, whereas if they would have been employing those NVCI techniques, they probably would not have been hurt.
Is that because they're choosing to do less than their NVCI would allow them to do in a restraint? Is it, I mean, is that the?
I can't get into all, into all of their thinking as to why, but the ones that I'm aware of is that they've come up behind the student and have done a restraint or a hold, which is not, and then the student has headbutted them. There's a lot of headbutting injuries and NVCI will train you in not going up behind a student to do a restraint like that.
And I can share, since the mid-eighties, Wisconsin has forbidden corporal punishment in schools. One eighteen thirty-one is a statute, and within that statute, I used to teach this with the child abuse classes, I used to teach at Marion. It does say that school officials, employees, agents of the schools are not prohibited from using, and the term that's used is reasonable and necessary force, and it does say for self-defense. The way that I've always understood it and the way I used to teach it and always heard it this way is when you're talking about self-defense, there's a difference between an aggressive act and a defensive act. And certainly defensive act, to keep yourself from getting hurt, you know, you're going to be covered. If on the other hand, in doing that, you punch the kid in the face, that's an aggressive act and then you're going to be in trouble, so.
Well, if they're swinging a chair, I mean, and I realize we can't script out everything and I get that, but what, what I am concerned about is we're, I'm not, I think, I'm wondering if people are getting hurt because they are, they would rather just get slightly hurt than risk their career, especially if they didn't have the training.
I have not seen that in the accident and injury reports I've reviewed. Jean may be able to speak better to that.
I would say that I would agree with Melissa's point, sometimes people put themselves in harm's way when they shouldn't. They intervene and they get hurt intervening when they probably should have helped off.
Like what, not intervening in a situation?
Well, you know, the student is escalating, but you get close to the student, behind the student and then the student hits you, or you try to take something away from a student and the student hits you or scratches you.
Block the door.
Yeah, block the door and they.
That's a big one. You know, and so the employee gets harmed when they may have been better off observing, calling for help.
If we know the help, if we know the help is going to come. Although I've heard disturbing stories about that not happening, though I was assured that where that happened, that's not the case anymore. Now, this is going to sound like I'm coming from a completely different direction, but can we talk about, can we talk a little bit about the disproportionality in restraint-seclusion events where it is, seems to be happy about, let's see, we're about, looks like, we're about nine point nine percent African-American and twenty-three and twenty-eight percent of the incidents respectively. And a pattern that does not seem to be there, it doesn't seem to be all that out of line in other ethnicities and then specifically in African-Americans. So what's going on there?
I think that's around a lot of our training and our focus and one of the areas that we want to come to speak to you about in the future is equity and helping our staff to understand other cultures and respond appropriately and respectfully. We are getting more and more diverse students in our district that, and we need to help our staff to build relationships and, and help the students to feel like they're wanted in the district. I don't know if you, you want to speak more to that around the work of equity or Dara?
That's true. I want, I want to have the Equity Department come in and talk a little bit more about that. We're not seeing it just in restraints and seclusions, we're seeing it across the board. Mr. Becker, you're right on, we have some work to do here.
Now, understanding though, if, if twenty-eight point four percent of the, or, you know, twenty-six or twenty-nine or thirty-one, if that number of legitimate restraint events happened to occur with something a black student did, then I'm okay with twenty-eight point four percent of the restraints happening with black students. But if we're, you know, if those lines are blurring one way for certain ethnicities and not others, that's, that's serious and if, you know, if I see a mild elevation, that's one thing, but this is, it's significant and it's not, it's really one ethnicity where this is happening. So again, I don't want to give off any impression at all of not defending and not protecting. One other thing that was said before, so you can't restrain a student for, for ripping papers off, off the wall, so someone is, a kid just decides, "I'm gonna, I'm gonna be mean and I'm gonna start destroying art projects," then oh, well, you can't pull them away.
If a staff member determines that there's danger involved?
I suppose.
Yeah, I mean, if a kid is going to be mean and just, is just going to walk up, not touching anyone and just start smashing those things, no.
Being mean is not just cause for restraint or seclusion.
Okay, damaging art, so they can, I mean, I hate to say it in a public forum, but yeah, you can, you can't do anything about it.
Hurt.
We can, we can certainly discipline the student.
Absurd fact. Okay, so.
The other thing is that what a lot, what I spoke to about the nonviolent crisis intervention is a lot of techniques to help de-escalate the students. So once they start to tear something down, there are techniques you can use to de-escalate the situation before it gets out of hand. And those are the things we're trying to work on, the relationships, the de-escalation, the quiet spots, the calming techniques. All of those things are the things we want the students to learn and we need to teach them so that they aren't just being mean and ripping things off the wall.
That's good.
Keeping these things over.
Yeah, but you can't protect property.
If it was, like those up on the wall, they're glass, that would be imminent danger.
Okay, fair enough, but.
A computer would be imminent danger because it's going to smash and, you know, come back up and could hurt you. I mean, but if it's a piece of paper, artwork, no, you're right.
Okay. I mean, I, I understand, these are, these are tricky situations, but it, I guess, it concerns me on the one hand that we're probably, that we may be doing it too much with certain groups. On the other hand, it concerns me that basically a teacher has to sit there and watch if someone's destroying another kid's schoolwork or something. You have to watch until they stop. I mean, if you can verbally de-escalate it, great, I hope you can. I'm sure most of the time it, you know, we have good staff who know how to do these kinds of things, but really, that's, it's disappointing to me that you can, you know, someone wanted, I guess, I'll stop.
In defense of our teachers, I don't think they would just sit back and watch, as Claudia has mentioned.
Well, why can they, but they can't, you can't stop a kid from doing it.
They would not have legal justification to do a restraint, but they certainly could use an abundance of other tools to intervene. I don't picture our staff in almost all situations just standing and watching as a student might do that.
Right, but if, I mean, I suppose you could try to, whatever's being taken, you could try to take. could try to take, grab the papers and take them back.
Whatever intervention.
But, yeah, it's, I guess, I, I'm, I'm just, it's, it cuts, it cuts both ways, but I know this, you know, we've talked to people this year and the year before about about the ability to do restraints, and yet the perception continues. And people have a long memory of incidents in this district, and I don't, I don't know how, I don't know how that's going to be fixed. I'm afraid, what if it's not fixed before someone gets hurt, really hurt? And I know there's, I know of cases that we've, we've talked about where someone was doing something very dangerous to a teacher and they chose not to, chose not to restrain, when all of the professionals involved said they could have and probably should have restrained. And we're talking about cases where teachers were being attacked with, with weapons, when they were being, you know, and I don't want to, I won't go farther to get into specificity that would identify a student or a school, but you know what I'm talking about, and it's, I guess, that alarms me. There are certain things that were so dangerous that why they didn't act is scary to me.
And I, I mean, I would add that I'm hopeful that the committee that, the climate commit, the committee that Mr. Dorff has.
Engagement in climate.
Engagement in climate.
Engagement in climate, that if they, if they're getting ideas from, from teachers out there, if they have ideas, that we work as a team so that we can't have all the answers, we have to be a team. And I think that that was the idea behind the inception of that committee, is so that we can work on those things. And how do we make sure that we're looking at all the avenues to make sure the teachers understand that they can seclude or restrain if there's, it's a dangerous situation? How to do that properly? What's the best way to ensure that regular education staff is trained in seclusion and restraint and de-escalation techniques? So I welcome any input, and I think we all do, from all of you and anybody you would suggest, so that we can work on it, because that's a problem we're facing as a nation. So it's not just dramatic.
I, I think we also should go back and look at the definition of what physical restraint is, because I can think of situations that Mr. Becker's talking about that might involve me as a staff member initiating minor incidental physical contact that does not fit the definition of physical restraint. So Mr. Wagner's pulling pictures off the wall over there, I might just interpose myself between him and gently guide him away that is not a physical restraint.
Correct.
That is minor physical or incidental contact, and that's perfectly appropriate.
Right.
But I would know you would never mess up the artwork.
But if you would pull, if he wants, but if you grab one wrist, now it's restraint? Maybe not, maybe that's incidental if it's quick.
If you're not hanging out to that wrist, if you're just de-escalating.
If you're guiding.
Okay.
Redirecting.
If I grab you and hang on to you for, for, you know, length of time and, you know, longer than it takes you to get you away from there, then, then I suppose we could talk about restraint.
Well, that's, and that's, that's good to know, although again, I don't think, I would be concerned that staff doesn't, staff doesn't know that. And, and I, it's not okay with me if we roll in NVCI to the point where every single staff member has it within two years. I'm concerned about someone getting hurt in a month because, because they choose not to restrain. I'm concerned about the person who, for whatever reason, didn't restrain a student who was using a ridiculous amount of force and was got, and was lucky that nothing, oh, actually, no, they, they lost, they had a lost time work injury because of it. So that's what concerns me is, it's right now, and it's not okay if people come to realize in a couple of years that you can protect yourself.
Any other questions?
No.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I just indicated that Michelle had a question.
Oh, okay.
I just, I just want to do a follow-up, Jean. Do we keep track of if a, if the staff member has an injury, do we keep track if they have had the training or not? And so, you know, some of the incidents that I've seen where there's been some pretty significant injury, it appears, and this is what I would like to know for sure, it appears that they would have had the training, but perhaps the student caught them off guard, or maybe they didn't, you know, often as a special education teacher who knows a child very well, and the child does something that they can't anticipate. That's been my experience, that often, the person who gets injured the most can well be someone who's trained, but it's someone they have a good relationship and something happens all of a sudden. And I, I don't know if we keep track of that, and maybe it's my assumption, but I've, I've heard enough that tells me sometimes that occurs too. So I would just like to know how many of the people who are injured of our staff members have had the training and yet maybe find themselves in places trying to address an issue without restraining just because of by nature who they are. I don't know that.
The questionnaire does not ask, I don't think the questionnaire that they fill out has the question, have you had the NVCI training that you know? It does give us who the person is and where they work and what their position is, so we would know if they are a specialized teacher.
And we also keep a list of those that have been trained.
Okay. That would be important information too, I would think.
I think another important point that we consider from the principal supervision perspective is after any serious incident, we really do a post-bench, and if there is a seclusion or restraint, what we look at, because it comes down to human judgment, and it was interesting, because I was looking at the pictures too, and I was looking at the pictures in the hall, if somebody's ripping down the paper, pictures over there probably wouldn't have been something that needed restraint. And I think that that's the way that actually everybody in the room had kind of analyzed the situation similarly. So if there's a serious event where somebody is injured, we look at it as a situation where we can learn from the opportunity and see what went wrong and what we might do differently. And by the same token, if somebody is restrained, we look at it and try to determine, was the restraint appropriate? If so, what could we do differently? If not, what could we do differently? So we're, we really try and take each of those opportunities when it rises to that level of seriousness from the specialized perspective, but also from the principal leadership perspective, to look at it as an opportunity to make sure that we can continue to do better each time. I can also make sure that in our principal meeting next week, that we have an opportunity to briefly share, to make sure that it's reiterated as far as ensuring the safety regarding restraint and seclusion, so that the principals know and that the staff, they can reinforce the staff.
And what do we do for the students who witness the restraint? If it happens in the classroom, and I know there are privacy issues and things like that, but how do you debrief those students? How do you?
That's probably the area that we need to work on the most. Our teachers are the ones that have the relationships with the students. So our, our hope, and what I've seen traditionally, is that the teachers are coming back and talking to the students. A big thing we have to explain is fair and equal are not the same thing. And this child had, might have more needs or different needs than you. But again, I think that there's work that we could probably do for those students that have witnessed it.
Well, let's give the teachers parameters of, you know, what, how to kind of diffuse the situation.
Thank you.
So if you look at this, the, we have a hundred, hundred fifty-one separate students involved in seven hundred some incidents. So this is multiple incidents on average per, per student. Are, are a lot of these, I guess, you know, I think about, I think about a student in a specialized classroom where there's a much higher adult to, a much higher adults, adults to students ratio, and there's probably fewer opportunities for something even escalate to that level. And yet, I'm wondering, are a lot of these incidents of students with disabilities, are they happening when the student is in their portion of the day that is in the regular ed classroom?
So I just recently started digging deeper into that. Like I said, when I knew I was doing the presentation, and the five kids who are students that were restrained the most were in predominantly special education classes the majority of their day.
Okay.
With an eight, in elementary, eight students to two adults, and in high school, ten students to two adults, to one adult, excuse me, I said that wrong. Both of those are to one adult, I apologize, except for in the, some of our students, in our classes of students with autism, we have a two to one, are two pairs and a teacher with eight students.
I'm just wondering if maybe some of this happens in, in situations where the, the ratio is, are, are things, are things maybe happening when we mainstream kid, when we add mains, too much mainstream too quickly to kids? And maybe you're not seeing that.
It really depends on the school and the, and the situation. So some schools, it's the more, it's the students that are in the behavior-focused classrooms or the autism-focused classrooms, and in some schools, it's the kids that are in the general ed education classroom. It's a, it's a balancing act, is how much is too much, how much is not enough? We've been very clear that there's, should be a continuum of services. Inclusive practices does not mean all kids in regor ed all day long. I've been extremely clear about that, that every student is individualized for a reason, and that the least restrictive environment for some students is a self-contained classroom.
I think it's, it's important that the concepts, I mean, we've talked about this before, the, the concept of least restrictive is sometimes conflated with highest percent mainstream equals least restrictive, which, which isn't true, but I think that's probably a very common opinion. So, okay, thank you.
Chris. Two things, if I may, I'll go first to Mr. Becker's comment. I do have some concern with the least restrictive environment as it's being done in placements, especially where some of these students are disrupting the regular classroom to the point where it's affecting other students, and I would hope you'd continue to look and monitor that. One might argue it swung, the pendulum has swung a little too far that way. The second, it's sort of echoing something I believe Mr. Dorff said earlier, we're having more and more younger kids coming to school with a lot of emotional baggage. They're not in special ed, and maybe they shouldn't be there, and I hope, hope they won't end up there. One could argue that's a sentence that's very hard to get out of. But I would hope, as you alluded to, that the training for all our teachers on how to de-escalate situations and, and when restraint is appropriate and what type of restraint could be done for, for all our teachers, not just the specialized teachers. Thank you.
And I think a lot of that, Vicky's, the People's Services Team, the Behavior Team on the People's Services side of the House is doing a lot of training. They've had multiple speakers come in here to talk about trauma, and that was not just for special ed, that was for all staff. Schools have been sending people to different trainings around behavior, but that, there's a huge focus on the regular education, students and the regular, regular education teachers also. So I, I believe that we've been doing a pretty balanced training effort, always can do more, I'm sure, but we've been working, trying to be very collaborative in making sure that we are reaching regular ed staff around how do you write behavior intervention plans for students who do not have disabilities, because some of them do. Because the way we're going to stop the behavior is to get at the function. Every behavior serves a purpose, there's a reason for every behavior. And we, once we realize that what that behavior is and we are able to teach on that behavior and also give the students a way to get that need met in a different manner, until we teach them the appropriate manners, that's what's going to help us. And we want that to start in regor ed, because again, like Dr. Wagner said, we don't want them to have to get, wait until they've exhausted all resources and end up in special education if we can catch them early and do it, do justice in regor ed. So thank you for recognizing that.
Well, Dara and Julie and Claudia, thank you very much. It's, you know, we, we originally planned on thirty minutes, we went almost ninety, but it's a topic that has great impact, obviously, on a couple of our priority areas with engagement and thriving workforce both, and you provided us with a lot of good information and insights and told us about the directions that things are going with this, and I thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we have some proposed course updates for the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year.
Sure. And Executive Director Mike Fries will be sharing the updates, but in general, we provide course updates on a regular basis as we move forward and develop curriculum. But at this time of year, there's sort of some cleanup that needs to be done with some name changes and some other, some other pieces that we can clarify related to different name changes in courses that are dual credit offerings and things of that nature. So it's a brief summary of some of the changes that will take place that are timely with the course catalogs coming out in the very near future. Mr. Fries?
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Nice to see you. Thanks again for the opportunity to bring forward these mostly minor course updates for your consideration. The requests come to you tonight from multiple content areas at the secondary level, and as the Board memo indicates, they're a reflection, I think, of the great work that is being done between our organization, Northeast Wisconsin Technical College, and the University of Wisconsin-Green Bay as part of our Turbo Charge Initiative, which is ongoing. The team I've had the pleasure of working with in the Secondary Teaching and Learning Department is key in making sure that our annual scheduling process is introduced effectively to our secondary schools, and this includes reviewing and updating our course books and Academic and Career Planning Guide. You've met many of them on the curriculum coordination side of things, but I'd like to mention and share with you how crucial our administrative assistants are, and they include Shannon Meyer and Wendy Perkel. They're, they're just crucial in this process. They make sure that all of our documents are very well-prepared, that changes that are recommended and made are done basically in real time, and that communication with all of our stakeholders around this and throughout the district are clearly communicated with. They're wonderful to work with, their work is greatly appreciated by the folks that benefit from it, and tonight we'll be reviewing some of that. So around the planning this year, we decided we thought we could do a little bit of cleanup with our official course titles to make sure that they look cleaner, are more properly aligned with post-secondary partnerships that we've been fostering, and more consistent, frankly, with all of our courses throughout. We'll try to keep these to a minimum in future years, but we're, we're kind of cleaning some things up from years past. You'll see some of the requests along those lines are basically just for title changes. I should also point out that we will be aligning what we call college credit in our high school courses with what almost everybody else in the industry calls it. So from now on, instead of referring to things as concurrent enrollment program or CEP courses, we will be referring to them as dual credit or DC courses. This should reduce some confusion on the student transcripts and in the discussions with families, colleges, and universities. It's basically just getting in alignment with what most everybody else does. The only course tonight that's really new that we're asking for approval for is the cultural images course. We've included the UW GB syllabus as a general example, as in the appendix for your review. We've been working with UW Green Bay on this course for the past year and a half for, for a few reasons. First, we have analyzed the prerequisites that UW GB has in place for admittance into their School of Education at the sophomore level. This course meets a Gen Ed requirement for that School of Education and can be used as a Gen Ed for students pursuing other potential colleges as well, and is also transferable around the UW system. It meets requirements for studies addressing the ethnic studies perspective area at UW Green Bay. Second, it also, we believe, may be supportive of recruiting future educators from all backgrounds and experiences who will hopefully consider pursuing a career in education. So at this time, I'm happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
Brenda?
There's a question, or sorry, there's a course, the very first one, media literacy, I think.
Yes.
And you have it, it, it's for NCAA eligibility, so it doesn't say that it's a dual credit course, I'm wondering what that means.
Yeah, that's correct. Everything on here tonight isn't a dual credit course. Some of them are just part of the other kind of general cleanup pieces that needed to happen. So we have a variety of things for a variety of reasons being presented tonight.
But if it's not a college credit, why do we care whether it aligns with NCAA eligibility?
Yes, I apologize.
That's my question.
Yes, I apologize. So the NCAA Center for Eligibility reviews high school coursework to determine whether it meets the criteria for being accepted as a foundational prerequisite. So they have core courses. You must have, if you'd like to compete in NCAA or in athletics that are certified by NCAA at the college level, you have to have a transcript that, that verifies that you've taken a core series of courses that provide the academic foundation for four-year colleges. They review courses that high schools submit. They do have a mechanism for reviewing and approving some non-traditional courses. So this one had not been. So this one had not been accepted. They kind of, they triggered on the word media, and they felt that it may not have been rigorous. And so we provided all sorts of background information and, and we reframed it according to the, the common core standards that it aligned with. And they said, oh, we understand what you're presenting here, and so it, it is accepted now.
That's a, that's a half-credit, fourth-year language arts elective. And if a student had that on their transcript, as it stands right now, NCAA institutions would look at their transcript and say, well, you've only got three and a half credits of language arts, you need four. They would not count that as a language arts credit, and therefore, they needed to make the name change. Is that correct?
Yes. Said much worse succinctly. I appreciate that.
Literally, that's all they did was change the name, and then they accepted.
In this case.
In this particular case.
Yeah, you just showed them your syllabus was, was rigorous enough, it just was the name that triggered it.
Yes. Initially, you simply submit a, a name and a brief description, and then they say, they kind of give you a, kind of a thing. And so then you, you appeal and you follow a process for appeal.
Wow.
So, but if, if they, if they, I mean, it's not that big of a deal, but if, if they evaluated the content and approved the content, why is it, why does the name matter anymore if they approved the content? Is it just to prevent confusion?
A little bit of both. Yes, it's, yes.
Because you, you send to a school and a, a school's department is, also triggers on the word media even, and then we have to go through this whole thing with the school?
Yeah, correct.
And then, I'm just curious, this doesn't have anything to do with these courses, but as we look at this new course, the cultural images and materials for children, and, and the challenge that we have in terms of recruiting teachers that mirror our students, and, and the hope that we can, can start to really grow our own, are we looking at expanding more of these courses that would kind of feed into the education pathway for students so that they, it sparks an interest in them more than, more than it would had they not taken any courses?
Sure. Great question. And it is part of a comprehensive strategy through our Turbo Charge Initiative. We've been working with UW-Green Bay to identify courses that, you know, at the university level for, for educator bachelor degree certification pieces, you have to, of course, fulfill your general studies requirements in your freshman year. And this particular course happens to be the only one that we could find that's a kind of a college freshman-level course, but is also required for the College of Ed, that they would be willing to kind of play ball with us on. So it's been great to work with them around this. There are other, there are, there are other general studies courses that we also have in, in dual-credit capacity. And so for us, it's a matter of packaging and clarifying for our students and our school counselors, hey, did you know if a student takes these series of courses, they'll have this many ready to be potentially accepted in the College of Education? So some of that is in the packaging and the explaining. We also have a, a program of study sheet for careers in, in education and the types of courses we offer for early childhood education that, that are supported in our family consumer science area, as well as this course, which will be offered in either social studies or language arts, based on how we're able to, so it'll be a flexible department offering. But we'll be able to show students how a series of courses can lead potentially to this.
Okay, thanks.
Any questions? Okay, move that forward. And thank you for giving the shout-out to the administrative assistance. I mean, that, you know, their work, I think, sometimes does go unheralded, and it was, it was really decent of you to do that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Next, we have co-curricular activities policy 370.
I'll start the introduction as Dr. Holmes waits to the table. We were asked to look at policy 370, which is co-curricular activities, to ensure that the policy is transparent in encouraging and providing information to our activities and athletic directors regarding what I'm going to refer to as a quote-unquote "no-cut" policy in our elementary and middle school activities. So as we examined the policy, the information was contained within that policy, but we thought it could be rewritten to be a little bit more transparent and clear to our activities' directors. And as Tim Flood, our, I'm going to get his title wrong, but Coordinator of Activities and Athletics?
District Administrator of Co-Curricular Activities.
Thank you, Dr. Holmes. As Tim looked further into activities at the middle school level, there are some activities that would not be able to be a no-cut activity, such as our show choirs or our plays. There's just so many roles in a play that all students would not be given an acting role, but we could encourage students to participate in the play in other ways. There's only so many spots on the stage for a show choir, so not all students would be able to be included in a show choir, but there's other options for students in various different singing opportunities. So the, the policy was written to define full participation, taking into account those factors, and also taking into account to the extent that a budget would not permit eight teams or, or that sort of scenario. We have been lucky that our activities directors have been creative in finding opportunities and being very creative to have more teams to, in, in order to facilitate that extra interest in our, in our athletic options.
Well done.
Thank you.
I, I think the part, if you look at the proposal document, Part II definitions, Melissa was referring to the full participation definition, Part B, and it refers to what participation means, consistent with nondiscrimination requirements and to the extent that the budget facilities and the quality of the experience or type of activity allows. We wanted to make sure that we have something in the policy that indicates that every effort will be made, but we understand that there may be some limitations in some of those areas.
So you are not cutting any sports, it's more choir, or not choir, show choir, is that what you said?
Show choir in our middle, not in all of our schools, but for example, at Red Smith, we have a very healthy turnout for show choir, and we're not able to accommodate all the kids who go out for show choir. But additional opportunities are given to kids who show an interest in, in music, they may, just may not be in the show choir.
And this policy is in effect for all schools, right?
This policy implies district-wide.
Right. Is there any way to note, just some of the variances are not really noted, and it's kind of vague, maybe, for parents?
Well, I, I understand what you're asking. We, our activities and athletic directors do, do a program or provide information at orientation regarding this, regarding opportunities and regarding the, the no-cut policy and that sort of thing. So that would be included on a school-by-school basis geared towards probably what their turnout and interest is in that school. Some of our schools don't have to cut even for the plays or for the show choirs because they don't have that interest. I think it would be hard to, to monitor that in a policy, which is supposed to be more general, general rather than implementing or, or a procedure, because that interest could also wane and, and grow at schools throughout the years, too. One year, you may not have a lot of kids up for that particular activity, but next year, you may not. So we do, I know that at the beginning of the year, but even at the end of, at the end of a school year, because those programs are worked on prior to the end of a school year, that Tim is, Kim did review that with the athletic and activities directors, and now Tim will be doing that as well.
So every school has their website. Is there, is it going to be reflective for their website as to what they're maybe more specific to what's happening at their school?
Yeah, and that's, that's a, a good, a good possibility we could do. Every school has their, their school-based information that they share with parents, and in that information, it does talk about which activities are limited and which ones are not. But it could be added to the website.
Because you're saying it, it can definitely be different between schools, but maybe that would be a nice thing, you know, for parents to be able to not be surprised.
Yeah. I think that's a good idea. But to be honest, I, I think some of our schools do have that document online, but I'll, I'll make sure with Tim that, that that's something that we do district-wide. I think that's a good idea.
Anything else? Okay. I'm sorry.
It was a last minute.
No, I, I'm, I'm trying to.
Got it under the wire there.
Thank you. I, I want to make sure that if there are students that, you know, sometimes we find ourselves right on the bubble in our school. In other words, you don't have, you either have too many students and we're struggling with gym time, or maybe we have just barely enough. Is this, does this policy require the school to go to the district office supervisor to have those conversations, to problem-solve together? Because I know we talked about that. And I think that's a really important thing, is to make sure that that conversation is held so that every stone is unturned, because, again, we're trying to provide as many opportunities for our kids. And I, that's what I was looking for, and I wasn't seeing it. And I know we talked about it.
I guess we could, paragraph three C, on the second page.
If I understand correctly, what, what you're saying is something in here that would, would require the folks at the school to come?
Yeah.
Okay. And then it puts the onus more on folks down here to make sure that they're supporting the school's needs.
Well, and, and being able to say, you know, we left every stone unturned. We tried to get multiple gym space, we tried to work, you know, or even collect, and Tim in the conversation.
I think that's a real good idea.
Do you know what I mean?
I do.
Because sometimes it's easy when you're in it to say, oh, we just can't do that. And, and because there are so many barriers, but maybe, maybe central office, the, Tim knows something that they don't know. That's all. I just, I just would like one more conversation before we maybe limit something.
So my initial reaction would be just to add a sentence about requiring the AD to consult with Tim's position if, if full participation is not able to be accommodated.
Right, if every child who's out.
And that's paragraph C of the implementation, Part III. I think that fits.
Okay, we'll make that change.
Go ahead.
Just in a request, when it comes to us in Neptune in two weeks, can you just give, you know, give us what's here today? And then that's in red?
That's usually what we do.
So we can find it? Okay, great, thanks. It's a challenge to read through these, you know.
Chris is for us, too.
Thank you. I'm bothered by what you mentioned about Red Smith and show choir, you have way too many kids and you have to, you know, in essence, keep some back. That, that's a dilemma, and I think a bad one you have in larger schools. I know I faced it for years at Preble. We are only allowed to have one play. So if, if our school is twice as big as another school, our, our kids had half the chance kids in other schools had of being in a play. So I, I guess I would really like to look at situations like that, being able to have a second show choir, have a large school on that much of a demand. I mean, I thought we were trying to do some of these things based on demand, and if the demand's there, why aren't we meeting it? Likewise, with larger schools, and, you know, should they have the opportunity for a second play in some of these areas where you can only have X number of students participating at a given time?
Some of our schools have gone to providing other opportunities. Red Smith is a good example of where that particular teacher that does the show choir has a, it's, it's not called junior varsity, but they have like a, another group that does swing choir-esque things. It really comes down to facility piece in that, because those kids have to come in at a different time to practice them. We do, we do provide different opportunities.
That's not what I heard earlier, but I'm happy to hear that.
It's not the official swing choir.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
But is that a solution like that, which is, which is good, and does he still have two show choirs or, or something, or something similar? Did they use to, or the Preble?
Preble does.
Preble still does.
Preble still does.
Yeah.
But it, I guess in the, in the spirit of fairness, you know, when, when we have, when we have staff members taking on a, a co-curricular, they're not, they're, they're certainly not, they're certainly not doing it for the money. There's a lot of the hours to, to pay ratio for that stipend is pretty high hours per dollars there. Are we, are we making allowances for that, for a second person to help out with that, or for it to, right? Because the, the fact that some teachers might just do even more within the same, right, or running two instead of running one is an admirable thing to do, but it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be an expectation, and people should be compensated for double work if they're doing double work.
Absolutely.
Or, or the work should be split. So we do, do that now?
Yes. And we discussed that if a situation arose where we had to add another coach or add another team, then we would guarantee that that happened.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Next, policy 523.1, employee health exams.
So in, in front of you, I'll just introduce this as Jean gets hers out. This policy primarily relates to the statutory requirements that the district needs to comply with regarding pre-employment health examinations, primarily the tuberculosis testing. This policy is really just codifying what we're already doing in the district with respect to pre-employment health examinations, just that we didn't have it written, and we are required to have a, a written policy on this.
Chris?
When I read through it, and I, I may not have understood it correctly, I did see something in there about student teachers or intern, student interns also required to have a TB test. I understand that. Was that on their dime, or is it something since we have a nurse down, office downstairs here now that could be done internally for them?
The student teachers, that's done through their university.
They usually can have that down here.
Other questions on that one? Okay. And then, our last item, student teaching internships policy and guidelines for student teaching internships rule.
Okay. This policy as well just memorializes what we are already doing in the district with respect to our student teachers and internships. We have been receiving more and more requests from universities and even universities that we have not historically worked with in the district to place student teachers and to create internship opportunities for folks in, in positions that are not typically a student teacher. So for example, OTs, PTs, NWTC has a par educator program that we provide internships for as part of their program. And this, again, is really to provide clarity to those organizations and those post-secondary institutions that we work with, what our process is, so they know on the front end, and, and then to help facilitate that process here in the district. Speaking of giving credit to administrative assistance, John's administrative assistant, Diane Rich, does a lot of work with our student teachers, and it really, it's time-consuming. But we hope to encourage student teachers to come here in the district and get the experience of working in the district so that we can retain them when they're ready to graduate.
Do we have intern teachers coming in? I haven't seen that being used in a long time.
We had an intern this past year come in, and there's a deadline through the Department of Public Instruction to apply for that, and so we, we did that.
Are stipends available to those folks?
Right. We gave the stipend that's required, the minimum stipend that's required.
What is that stipend?
I don't remember, but it's, it's a, it's a small amount.
You know what it is?
Six thousand four hundred.
It's what?
Six thousand four hundred.
Oh, okay. And that's for, for one semester?
Six thousand four hundred.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Well, that's a lot more. I, I did an internship rather than student teaching, but mine was fifteen hundred, but that was.
Two years ago.
Yeah.
Things have changed in the last two years.
Yeah, several presidents ago. Okay, move that forward. Thank you. And that's, that's the teaching learning work session.
All right. Thank you, Ed. Next, we'll move to organizational support, and that'll be facilitated by Andrew Becker.
Okay. So we have under discussion items. First, we have the resolution in support of the Wisconsin Voucher Transparency Bill. Questions on that?
I'll start. And coming around as a handout, maybe, maybe you've seen this, maybe you have it. This is PI 401. This is what the board approved for a tax levy. This all does tie together, so bear with me for a couple minutes. And what I'll draw your attention to is on page three. And again, this is what we send to municipalities to post our taxes. This is an appropriate time for us, because it's December and tax bills are coming out. This is an appropriate time for us because it's December and tax bills are coming out. And you'll note on page three, there's, there's something new here, and since fall of 2016, if a school district passed a non-recurring referendum, that information will now be shown on future tax bills. So on page three, you see it clarified in terms of the sixteen and a half million dollars over ten years, and what that means in terms of actual dollars to each municipality. And I've circled an example for the city of Green Bay. If you turn to page four and look at the circle, that will be for Green Bay as well. So what it means is, we are, we will be levying, in this example, for sixty million dollars in the city of Green Bay. And on the tax bill, there will be a reference to what's on page three, in that eleven million of that sixty can be attributed back to the non-recurring referendum that was passed in April of 2017. So it's kind of a heads up for board members, this is new, it'll be on tax bills. It's a breakdown. It's relative to what I'll speak about in a moment, to vouchers. And what I mean by that is, the legislator has implemented the rule that will be effective on this tax bill for us. And there is some other dollars that I'll draw to your attention right now, too, that you have a resolution in front of you in, in support of vouchers. But what I'm standing around now as a hard copy, you know, again, I'm not going to go through all the numbers, there's quite a bit here, but what I circled for you is something that I know the board is familiar with, and that is the Milwaukee charter and the equalized aid that is reduced from the Green Bay school district and all school districts across the state in order to pay for that program. So each year, there's a reduction in our state aid, and this year you see it's approximately two point two million dollars. So that money is being reduced from our state aid to help pay for one of the three choice programs. There's a Wisconsin, which I'll get to in a moment, there's a Milwaukee, and this has helped funding that. So taxpayers in Green Bay, in our district, are funding that, seventy-five percent of that program statewide. And then the third are in receipt. We don't have any direct tax impact, but we do have one in Milwaukee. And the final piece is what is in Neptune relating to, and then leading up to maybe some information that's shared through DPI for your information. And what I mean by that is, and Stephen, if you want to put the first one up, the information I tried to provide online for you gives you some Wisconsin receiving and Milwaukee voucher enrollments, what the costs are for the parental choice programs for this year. So this information came out in October from DPI. On the second page, I have an arrow because we, what we're talking about here is the Wisconsin parental choice program. So again, there's three programs, but the one that's directly impacted is that program. Then if you move to the third Friday counts, and the two percent limit, you can look at other schools across, or districts across the state, and currently, there's a two percent And looking at Green Bay on page four, this limit will be increasing by one percent for each year up until we get to ten, and then it will become unlimited. Last year was one percent. This year we're at two. It will be moving up by one percent until we get to ten, and then it will become unlimited. So again, you can see numbers across the state for different areas and what they're impacting or impacted by. Once you get through that, there's more facts and figures in terms of numbers, enrollment by grades across the state. And again, I did not come here to, to read all of this to you, but I wanted to provide you with some background information from DPI, including the, the last information pieces regarding income, income limits for seventeen, eighteen, two hundred, or excuse me, one hundred and eighty-five percent of federal poverty level. Next year it will become two twenty. So that income level to qualify is being raised, at least for the next couple of years. And the impact to our district, I guess, can be summarized in the resolution itself. Towards the middle of the resolution, you see last year, we levied approximately one point two million dollars to cover voucher payments. This year, in addition to the two point two Milwaukee, on these vouchers, we will be levying, or have levying, an additional two point six million for that. So this resolution, similar to the new requirement for referenda, is asking that that same type of information be displayed on tax bills as well. So again, I'm trying to bring it back to where I started with our tax bills, what we have sent out to municipalities, providing just some information on Milwaukee, and at the same time, on the Wisconsin choice program that our students have an opportunity to attend if they so wish. So, Dr. Langefeld, I don't know if, if there's anything you wanted to add, or is there anything I should add further?
I think when we had this discussion, it's really about transparency. You know, the referendum is on the tax bill, that it's, it's making sure that the community knows what they're paying for. And right now, it's not there. It's not transparent. And so I think that that's one of the important things that we feel our community needs to know. And so this is a, this is a statewide effort. I'm understanding that there are a number of districts having these conversations. There is a piece of legislation proposed, obviously, and looking for support, and it may not come to light during this particular session, but I think it's an important conversation that I'm not sure everyone in our community understands or is aware of. So as we're moving and shifting dollars that traditionally had gone from, from students in public education now to private, what's not in this discussion, what you always can't see because we don't know, is how many students who are being, being supported in private education are now receiving the vouchers. So that you start to get, Senator Olson years ago called it two systems. We're supporting, now the taxpayers are now supporting, two educational systems, one private and one public. And so that's, that's really the piece that, that you can't quite see. It's, you know, the assumption is there are public school students who've now shifted to take the voucher, and that's not accurate at all.
So I think this resolution would be signed by all board members if we're in support of it. And I don't know, should I read it into the record?
Well, we have, we would, wouldn't we vote on it next week?
That's what it would be.
I, I mean, in the, we would.
But we're not.
It's a resolution, so I think we would vote. Move it to an action item and vote on it.
I do not need to read it. Read it into the record.
Okay.
Today?
You thought we could vote on this one?
The resolution?
Yeah.
We thought we could send it along as a, as a.
We will need to take a vote.
Yeah.
A letter, we wouldn't have to, but a, a, a resolution, we have to vote on it. So that would have to become an action.
Yeah, this isn't just a letter.
Yeah, this is an actual resolution.
Is, is there a time, is there some kind of a, I, I can't imagine that this will be fast-tracked by leadership or anything, but is there any kind of time urgency to this, that two weeks would be a problem?
I don't think so.
Well, I think as importantly, it coincided with the December tax bills that'll be coming out. We wanted to make sure it was in the context of that at this particular time.
Other questions?
I, I have a question. And John, or, or Michelle, you know, both of you, is there a quick answer for why are that two hundred and thirteen million dollars that Milwaukee is receiving for their choice program, that seventy-five percent of it, actually more than seventy-five percent of it, is coming out of general purpose revenues instead of their, you know, the Milwaukee community itself?
Well, I, I guess I'll, I'll take a stab early at it. In ninety-three and when they began to look at vouchers in Milwaukee, as, as many of you know well, that funding mechanism was, was set up in that place. Since I've been here, and Steve, I don't know that I've seen it moved significantly. However, it actually is increasing each year slightly. So if you look over the past twenty years at our state aid and look at the factor that it's being multiplied every year, it, it's actually working to impact us even at a greater level. It's slight, but it's even.
So, okay, less and less of their equalization aid is going to fund their choice programs?
Correct.
And that incremental increase is a percentage of the total cost? Or?
Yeah, yes.
And you can see that factor listed here as a decimal, point zero one four three, and
it goes on about ten figures. So each year, you can check.
Oh, I see, that number's, okay.
Yes, and it was slightly lower last year, and I did check to make certain. It's a large number that many taxpayers are not aware.
I agree.
That that's taken off of the top and really affects us significantly because we're fairly heavily aided for state aid purposes.
Chris?
Thank you. Your example talks about how it affects the Green Bay school district, but it really affects every district in the state, is that correct, John?
Yes.
So it doesn't matter whether I'm in Florence or Rhinelander. And a problem I've noticed through the years is the smaller districts, when it came to vouchers and whatnot, they didn't seem concerned, it was only about the big districts. But I don't know how many of the business managers out in those districts understand this, or maybe they figure it's just too small, but the way the small districts are really hurting for money, I would think they'd want to take, be aware of this and try to do something about it. So as you mentioned about other districts picking up on resolutions such as ours, I certainly hope these smaller districts are doing that and getting to their legislators also.
Brenda?
And so it just occurred to me, looking through this again, are we just asking, I mean, is this bill just asking that the, that the current Wisconsin parental choice program cost is being put on the tax bill and not, it doesn't look like they're asking for the Milwaukee part of our portion?
That's correct, but I thought it's important information that we should raise tonight, that in addition to vouchers, that that piece is almost, is large.
Same, yeah.
At this point.
It's always there.
I have a question.
Run.
Is there any press release with this or anything so that people are more aware of it, more than just this going to the state legislature?
Well, I think what we tried to do here tonight was have an awareness. I wasn't certain when the vote would be and if it was at or is at the next scheduled board meeting, that, that would be appropriate at that time.
I think, I'm trying to think if Lori does that routinely.
As a media release.
As a media release. I can't remember.
I know she puts them on the website. She has put all of these on the website. I, I, some of them, I believe she has done a media release, I don't know what.
Yeah, I wonder if the resolutions she's done media releases for as opposed to our, our letters that we send.
Probably.
It could be.
But I'll follow up with her. That makes sense, though, to me. Good idea.
Just because I think a lot of people don't fully understand that, and to see it on paper would be another story.
Okay, anyone else?
All right, so we'll move that forward, and then that'll become an action, move that to an action item.
Yeah.
Sandy will put that.
And then we have, we have scheduling a board retreat.
Yeah, I think Michelle and John want to meet with the board to kind of look at long-term financial strategies, sort of financial strategic discussion is what we're looking at doing. Is there a timeline for this? May as soon as we can, or what, what, what month were you thinking we tried to get this done in?
Well, I think, I think sooner is better than later. Obviously, we were gonna, we'll embed within that discussion around insurance and kind of look at all the different expenditure pots. As we move forward and start creating a new budget for this next school year, I think it's really important, and we're in process right now. So I would say, you know, January's probably, that would be great, I'm not sure it's possible, but certainly.
Right, with the state convention and.
Yeah, all the other things happening.
I would, I would hope like February would be a.
But February.
We do have, I mean, we do have a fifth Monday in January, the twenty-ninth, so we could potentially put it there. I don't know, why don't we just start there? Does that, does that work for, for both of you?
It's what, uh, what day?
The twenty-ninth. It's a Monday in January.
Hold on.
On board. Yeah, I, I can.
Two, three hours usually we aim for.
Okay.
You're good? Everybody's good?
Yep.
Well, that's kind of.
Wait, Chris hasn't checked it.
Only then.
Right now it is.
Well, hold it then.
Yeah, was there a time?
Well, we'll set a time.
Okay.
Usually we, four thirty or five, unless those times don't work for people.
It's five.
Uh, five.
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 Okay.
On the twenty-ninth.
Are you going to send that out, Sandy? Okay, thanks.
Okay. Then under human resources, we have two items. First, we have the volunteering community partner coordinator job description.
Yes, this job description is, is new, and it would be a person who would report to Kim Shanok and would oversee and work with her on the volunteer community partners. Currently, we don't have an individual who does this kind of work, and the needs have been, have been expanded because we have more and more relationships with our community partners now, and, and, and volunteer opportunities.
Okay, any questions on this?
Do we have any, any comparison data? I mean, you said we've got more. I, I'd be interested in, in what are we looking at now? What do we have last year, the year before?
The numbers?
Yeah, just to, you know, see your rationale for this, other than saying we have more, I'd like to see.
Could we, could we bring that?
What does that look like?
Just Kim, Kim must have.
Yeah, and I think, I think this is, if I could, just to offer as well, this is in anticipation of, of community school initiative moving, and it's also in, in moving all the community school spaces that we're looking at in community partners, so that the burden of being able to monitor and have access to and all of those systems is addressed in a cohesive way through a systems approach and having one person facilitate and coordinate all, all of those efforts. Right now, it's, a lot is up to the building principals and their schools and so forth.
Is this basically the, the same position that Stan told me?
Stan Kogus?
No.
No, no.
I mean, isn't that the same kind, isn't that the stuff that he did?
Uh, no, actually, we, we, this, this position would be aligned more of as a support position to Kim, and Stan's work is being done now more by Lisa Johnson?
Yes.
Is that correct? This is, this is unique. We've, we've not had anything exactly like it before. And we're looking at the pay range that would be comparable to, I think, a student, pardon? Student learning advocate. So it's probably around the fifty thousand dollar range.
Okay.
Forty, forty, fifty, maybe.
Is it, it's, is it as close as I think to the coordinator they have at Aldo?
Um, it's, that person is an hourly employee, but it would be.
But the work is somewhat similar.
But district-wide.
They just do it for one school.
Yes, correct. But district-wide, yes, correct.
Okay, other, other questions? All right, I will move that forward, and then we have the twenty eighteen nineteen school calendar.
The calendar that you're being presented with is a fairly traditional calendar in line with the calendar that we have this current year. The one note that's different, we put on the memo, is that the committee agreed that the Friday, April nineteenth is going to be treated as the conference conversion day. And we struggled with this because we wanted to make sure that schools for our students ended on a Friday in June, that they didn't have to come back on a Monday, and so this allowed us to do that.
Okay, any questions on the calendar, Brenda?
I know, we just approved the trimester scheduling at East, and this does not correspond with what they had hoped for. Is that something that, looking forward, we'll look at aligning that, our spring break with, with the break into the trimester?
The, the.
Because it would put it, I don't know, two weeks earlier, I think?
The calendar for East is being worked on right now, and I think that the intention was to bring it forward as a discussion item under the superintendent's report at your regular board meeting.
What would be?
It wouldn't be voted on, but it would be presented so that you could see what it looked like.
You mean their calendar?
Yeah.
That would be different from this calendar?
Correct.
Okay.
I think that rises to a level of a vote, though. I mean, I don't think, I wouldn't vote, I think we probably will vote for it, but I think when we're writing a whole calendar for a school, I think we should be on the record with it. Other questions?
Okay, well, I'll wait to see what that scheduled calendar looks like. Okay.
Chris?
Just a, a point to think about, if, if we have this calendar and there's another calendar for trimester, theoretically, there could be some additional expenses with transportation, could there not? You'd have to be careful about that.
So in the work with East High School, we're definitely making sure that we're minimizing any additional costs, and that we're also being very cautious about doing anything that would negatively impact things from the nature of, for example, the high school students not being off at the same time elementary students are off. We want to make sure that the, as we promised the board when we came forward earlier, that the, the trimester calendar is supported by, by all. So the, the spring break, for instance, for the coming year, it will be in alignment with the spring break as well. In the future, we may look at, where we were in the calendar process for the district as a whole.
Right.
The train had left the station on where spring break was, we needed to make sure that it was, that it stayed where it was at. In May, in future years, we may be able to work a calendar that's a district calendar that also gives consideration where the trimester falls so that it makes more sense with the trimester break for one or more high schools that may be doing that at that point.
Okay, yep, thanks.
Other questions? I have, I have one. So this calendar retains two days where there's no school for just elementary. If I am checking this correctly, November twenty-first and March eighth. So as I've been just doing a little more asking around, this is, this is anecdotal, it's not a formal study or anything, but what I'm hearing is that, and maybe the I C S C reps could help me out with this, not necessarily mentioning names, but because of the high number of absenteeism, I've, I've heard that there are teachers who kind of consider it a lost day. Is that, is there some extent of that, or they would put, I'm not, I'm not saying that they would be doing something not worthwhile, but they would be planning their class in accordance with the knowledge that a lot of people would be out?
I would definitely say that teachers expect a higher number of students to not be in class. Specifically in my AP classes, I know that my teachers don't change routine more, say, but in some of my non-A P or regular classes, they do do something a little more simple so the students they know are going to be gone will have an easier time catching up.
And that's on those two days that elementary has school and high school doesn't? Yeah? Okay.
So, yes, I, I don't know if it's, I don't know if there's anything that can be done about it, but it's, you know, it's, it's not a good situation for families, and there's, there's potentially an equity issue of whether, you know, who, who are the high school students who have to stay home because of siblings? And it would be not, not those in a, perhaps in a situation where one or both parents have a self-directed work schedule, or have the ability to have not both people work full-time. Those students aren't as affected by this, but students who are maybe in a different family situation are affected more. So I don't want, I, I don't like anyone being in that situation, but especially here, I think it's, it could have a disproportionate impact.
We, we appreciate your concern, especially from the equity perspective. March eighth is actually off for both secondary and elementary, but you are correct that November twenty-first, which is the Wednesday prior to Thanksgiving break, it is a day that, that only elementary is off, but that is also a day that, that from time to time, we also have a higher-than-average lower attendance because it's connected to the long holiday weekend, and sometimes there are families that are making other travel arrangements on the day already. However, we would want to make sure that we are supporting high-quality instruction, even if there is a lower attendance rate on that day.
So did this represent a, a reduction in the number of such days, or was there only ever one?
I don't, I don't remember. I'll, I'll look back and double-check that for you.
Okay, I mean, I certainly like the idea of pairing it close to a, you know, close to a holiday when you're, when you're going to do that, and I guess I feel better to know that there's one, and my apologies on March, if the groups are both off, but they're for different reasons, so they're listed separately.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions on the calendar? Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks, Andrew. Next, we do have a closed session, I'll read that motion. Closed session has been scheduled for Monday, December fourth, immediately following the adjournment of the work session meetings pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five one C, considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five one F, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data, specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons except for paragraph B applies, which, if discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations, to wit, personnel matters. And pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five one E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, more specifically to wit potential contracts. The meeting will begin in open session to consider the appropriate motion for a closed session so provided by law.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Sandy?
Aye.
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 Aye. Carried seven zero, we'll convene across the hall.
It'll be a short convene.
A short convene, that's good.